We could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so um our first item is to consider, can I get a motion? To consider an act upon the minutes of January thirty first, twenty twenty two, February seventh, February twenty third, February twenty fourth, February twenty eighth, March fifteenth, March twenty first, April seventh, all of twenty two.
So moved.
And I'll second it.
Is there any discussion on this item?
Hey, Nancy, was there any of those meetings that you were not present for? Because I knew you were traveling, so.
Yes, there was um and I. Yeah.
Alright, so we should probably vote on that one separately.
I mean, I'm happy to approve it just to, I I mean, I looked at everything. It's it's fine, sure. I mean, we could, but.
It's entirely up to you. It's your call.
I'm I'm totally comfortable voting to approve the minutes as they stand in one, but I appreciate.
Not a problem.
Call out and the carve out, but I'm fine.
Okay, I'm good, madam, first select woman.
Okay. Um, all okay, then, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
And if there's a way, if there's a way to notice in these minutes that I was absent for that meeting, then maybe that's a way around it. It would be great, um, proof if you wouldn't mind making note of that. I appreciate it. And thanks, Tom, for the reminder.
Sure.
Okay, um, our next item is item number four. Uh, Aquarian Water Company is here to uh hear um water conservation plan update and um. This is if somebody like I sound like I'm mute on echo. I don't know why that is.
Echo, echo, echo.
Okay, um. Alright, so I just want to introduce George Logan, who's with Aquarian. He uh did bring up this uh water plan with me already. But uh per the rules, he has to do it uh before uh in a public meeting, and so he is going, I'm gonna hand it over to George. Good to see you, Mr. Logan. I think you're. Alrighty, well, I'm gonna hand it over to you, sir.
Can I ask here, can I, can I ask one question? And there's definitely an echo. Um, this is not a voting item, right? Can we just confirm that?
Just it says to hear, not to hear and consider.
Yep.
That's right. I just want to make sure that we're, that's appropriate. Is that, that's appropriate?
Yes, it doesn't say here and can and consider, it says to hear.
Right. Fair enough. Sorry for the interruption.
Okay, I'll hand it over to you.
Quite all right. Yes, and um I'm actually here today to talk about Aquarian's uh twenty twenty two water conservation plan. Um, and I believe in your package, you have a um a copy of the uh the presentation. Or is someone going to sort of screen share? How's that work with your uh board selecting?
All right, you can do that, George.
I can do that? Okay, alright, super. I'll give that a whirl then.
And Dave Kelly, can you work on that?
Yeah, I already text him, Tom.
Alright. Thank you.
Hi, it's Mr. Logan, uh the one that's at least, I don't want to mute him at this point, but thank you.
I'm the one that's echoing?
Yes, sir, but go ahead. Just mute yourself.
Alright. Okay, alright, will do. Alrighty, so again, I'm here to chat about Aquarian's water conservation plan for uh this year. And we're uh hopeful to be back uh next month to talk about our capital improvement plan, uh but to cover both in one meeting would have taken it's too long uh much of your time. So I have about a seventeen slides or so. I will run through them pretty uh quickly. Uh, the agenda for this presentation, I'm just chat a little bit about the sources of supply for the town of Fairfield. Uh, brief description of our water system, and chat about the current state of reservoir levels. Chat about the effects of climate change in relation to water conservation. Uh, and the main gist of this presentation is to the to talk about the twice weekly watering. Just want to make sure that the board of selectmen, you all are aware um of it, and that it's going into effect as of April first. Uh, we will be uh doing a number of things to get the word out in the community, hopefully with your help. In effective uh season as far as water conservation concerned. Now chat a little bit about system maintenance repair. Um, and then some other programs and activities that we have going on. And if you're looking at your at your uh presentation, if you printed it out, I have slide numbers there as well. So I go to slide number three, and to chat a little bit about the uh sources of supply. So Fairfield is uh water system is part of our greater Bridgeport system, sort of metro Bridgeport area. And the Hemlocks Reservoir System, uh with the Hemlocks Treatment Plant, if you see on the screen there, it says Hemlocks Tank. But right at that site is where the uh the dam is, um the reservoir, that's the Hemlocks Reservoir there. Uh, but it's part of a reservoir system, and the reservoir system includes the uh Hemlocks Reservoir, uh which has a capacity of somewhere in the range of, I don't have the exact word with you, but somewhere in the range of four billion gallons. And then um you can see that half of the Hemlocks Reservoir uh is in uh is in Fairfield, uh but a good portion of it is also in Easton. Then there's the Aspetuck Reservoir, uh that has a sixty six million gallon capacity as compared to four billion. And then uh north of that, uh in uh Westing and uh Weston is the uh Sogatuck Reservoir, and that has a twelve billion gallon capacity. So the water flows from the uh from the uh the watershed into the reservoirs, uh the northern end again, Sogatuck Reservoir flows into the Aspetuck Reservoir, which flows into the Hemlocks Reservoir. Uh, that's why we generally keep the Hemlocks Reservoir full, because in the reservoir system, uh that is the southern uh most point of the system there, and we have the Hemlocks Water Treatment Facility there, and that has a the treatment facility has a capacity of about fifty uh uh million gallons. Uh, also contributing to Eastern's uh water supply is the uh uh Eastern System, which includes the uh Eastern Lake Reservoir and also the West Quantic Reservoir, which feeds into the Eastern Lake Reservoir. They have a treatment plant uh there as well. And then further east, uh less of an impact, but it is still part of the same water system uh is the Trap Falls System, that's way out in Shelton, and that also is a reservoir chain as well, which uh the northern end is the Meads Brook Reservoir, which flows into Farmill, which flows into Trap Falls, and then it uh feeds the distribution uh system. Uh, next slide, on slide four, reservoir levels for March. The uh it says March, but I'm sorry, these are actually the April levels. Uh, that is a typo there. Uh, this is the April levels. So as of uh April fifth, if you take a look to the left of the screen there, you'll see that the reservoir level, which is the the sort of pink line, um zero on the left-hand side, zero being empty and hundred percent being uh full, with a total usable storage capacity of uh nineteen point five billion gallons uh total for the Greater Bridgeport System. Uh, the reservoir is at full as of April fifth, so that's a very uh good thing. Uh, some of these other lines that you see is trending of uh lines from previous years. For example, the gold dotted line that represents the reservoir levels back in two thousand sixteen, when we last had uh a pretty significant drought during the fall of two thousand sixteen. Um, and then um we have twenty twenty one actuals is the blue dotted line that you see sort of up or to the upper right, where it uh it fills around April and May, and then we had a, you know, obviously some uses and drop off in July and August, and then it filled in the in the fall. We'd like to, we'd like to see that. The next slide shows uh two thousand sixteen. In two thousand sixteen, um if you take a look at the um the dashed uh line there for two thousand, uh I'm sorry, saw the blue line for two thousand sixteen, you'll see that uh we started off uh the year with the reservoir level uh uh pretty healthy. Uh, we started off in um uh in June, in July, where the reservoirs were above ninety percent, and then the uh the bottom fell out, and by the time we got to uh December twenty seventh of two thousand sixteen, we were less than forty percent capacity, and I think many of you remember uh what we went through in terms of that drought uh period, because we weren't sure what was going to happen uh following that uh that low uh dip, that low period. And we'd had all kinds of uh 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 meetings, and we took action, and I I'm sure many of you uh remember uh the uh the pipeline that we installed above ground. Um, some of it could be seen along the Merritt uh Parkway uh to try to help to stay it off and and bring uh capacity down to the uh the region, um particularly the southwestern Fairfield County area. So, climate change, climate change. Again, we're talking about water conservation, and climate change plays a big role in it. Um, increased frequency of heavy rainstorms due to climate change uh could lead to things, leads to things like soil erosion and nutrient loading of uh reservoirs, which can result in things like, which can affect water quality, turbidity, allergy, goth taste and odor complaints, treatment costs increases, and treatment byproducts. Across New England, I hear just some pictures, some other areas within uh Aquarian's service areas and uh from Fairfield County to Gratin, uh Stonington, uh you can see there was areas of flooding. Back in two thousand sixteen, we had a, you know, absolutely a drought situation. That on the right is the Dean's Mill Reservoir in Stonington, which generally is uh all that area. You see the stone and uh the grass here, that's usually full, and it uh got way down to a trickle uh in by November two thousand sixteen. And then um we also have uh, you know, heavy rains, more frequent uh heavy rain events, which leads to all all kinds of issues in terms of uh wind and rain and flooding. Um, more frequent intense uh storms causes things like coastal erosion, increased road salt during uh uh road salt use during the winter, which can affect our aquifers and and our reservoirs as well. We've gone through measures to try to minimize that, for example, working with the DOT to minimize uh their pre-storm applications uh around the uh reservoirs with some degree of success. Uh, the next slide, slide ten, uh bringing it a little bit more closer to home. Uh, this is back in June of two thousand sixteen. Uh, I was uh uh Director of Environmental Management back then, and I was uh out at the uh at the reservoir looking at some uh potential property owners that we felt that may have been um putting the the reservoir at risk, and I was standing out there, it was a beautiful June day, the reservoir was full, and I thought I'd take a a nice picture that my mother would like, you know, so I took a picture of her son, the engineer, out in the reservoir, and that's in June two thousand sixteen. Now you look at the right, that's from the almost the exact same vantage point, look at the tree lines, that is the Barge Reservoir in Stanford, and by December two thousand sixteen, we had a very dra- drastically different scenario there. So uh increased periods of dry weather, flash droughts, as we call them, rapid onset, again, June, reservoir is nearly full, and six months later, uh you know, a flash drought, and we, and not knowing the future, uh we took a lot of measures to try to prevent there being a major problem in Fairfield County. What we did, uh even let's just get closer to the current period of time, in uh twenty twenty, uh we actually had a mandatory irrigation ban in effect, because we started to see some signs. We became a bit more conservative in terms of uh when we uh pull the trigger, if you will, in terms of drought triggers, and we uh had a irrigation ban in twenty twenty. So even then, we were worried that we might be heading towards another drought situation. So what we have now, beginning in April through to October, is we have a uh twice weekly uh watering. Darien, uh Fairfield, Greenwich Mystic, Canyon, Newtown, Salisbury, Stanford, and Westport are under this uh mandatory twice weekly watering. And you can see uh that uh based on your uh house address, whether your uh last digit of your uh home address or businesses, uh even uh numbers, you can uh water Sundays and Wednesdays if you're, is there even numbers, between ten AM and six PM. Uh, odd numbers, uh Saturdays and Tuesdays, um be Saturdays and Tuesdays before ten AM and uh uh after uh six PM. And if you have no address, you've got that covered as well. Uh, so before ten AM and after six PM. Uh, so for the even numbers, I think I might have said between ten AM and six, I might say before ten AM and after six PM. So basically, we want to stay away from the uh uh peak periods during the uh the day, and we're asking folks to water uh at night. We, Aquarian will be utilizing a social media, direct mail, print ads, radio, and our Aquarian website, which is AquarianWater.com, for more uh in in information regarding our irrigation, uh twice weekly watering plan. AquarianWater.com is a great resource for information, uh not just for the twice weekly watering, but just in terms of our conservation plans, water quality reports, uh reservoir levels, that's also, if you want to check on a regular basis what the reservoir levels look like, you can uh find that information at AquarianWater.com uh as well. Next slide, so just a bit more information on the twice weekly watering, because this is where I suspect the uh government officials will get a lot of questions regarding the twice weekly watering. What does it mean? So it applies only to sprinklers, right? You know, spraying water in the uh air to water plants is inherently inefficient. Uh, but handheld hoses and drip irrigation are exempt, so it's not that you can't, you know, water your plants and flowers and uh but you have to use a handheld hoses and drip irrigation uh outside of the uh twice per week watering. Variances, we are all trying to be very reasonable here in terms of our water conservation efforts. So high efficiency systems with weather-based controllers uh are uh exempt, so mainly for larger properties over two acres. Uh, and also, if you have new plantings going uh coming in in the spring or the fall, you can contact Aquarian Water Company and and we won't uh bother, because we understand that for new plantings, uh new lawns, uh you may need to water more than twice a week to get them going. Uh, enforcement, so Aquarian, you know, uh you know, we are not uh law enforcement, although we do have Aquarian patrols that do uh patrol our watershed, uh but they're not patrolling your neighborhoods in uh in Fairfield. Violators uh that are uh that are brought to our attention will be sent a correspondence from Aquarian, you know, will ask nicely, remind folks about the twice per week watering watering. And then if um we if there is a homeowner or business that uh we notify uh three times, uh we will uh notify the first selectwoman about the the situation. Uh, and Aquarian legally, technically, has the right to shut customers off. Now, I must say, though, that uh we have not shut any customers off, but to date, uh but you can imagine if it's a if it gets into a severe drought situation, uh that possibility is there. We are trying to uh be nice and and kind uh about the twice weekly watering. We're hoping that the uh community through, you know, through information and folks just generally want to do, wanting to do the the right thing, will uh uh abide by the twice weekly watering, and we believe that it's better for your lawns anyhow if you water twice uh a week. Alright, so really quickly, uh system maintenance and repair, just in case you, yeah, just give a little bit of background information. We do water system flushing on a five-year cycle throughout our uh distribution system. Hydrant maintenance, if you're wondering, it's on a three-year cycle. Hydrant maintenance, uh whether it be uh it's not just painting the hydrants, but it's also uh the nozzles and make sure it's operational. Our water storage tank rehabilitation, uh we have a number of tanks in uh in Fairfield. You have the uh the tanks at the uh the tank at the Hemlocks Treatment Plant, and there's the uh Greenfield Hill uh tank. Uh, but we're there on fifteen to twenty-five year cycles based on condition. Pump station improvements, again, also on fifteen, twenty-five year cycles. You know, I started off as an engineer at Aquarian Water Company, became Director of Engineering, and back in the nineteen nineties, I've been with Aquarian for almost thirty years, but we are now upgrading pump stations that I uh either helped to uh to build, or I upgraded back when I was in my twenties, so starting to feel a little old there, but uh they are truly on these fifteen, twenty to twenty-five year cycles. Water treatment plant improvements are ongoing. Uh, you have Hemlocks Treatment Plant, there, there's so many uh, you know, the the waterworks uh involved for the treatment plant are vast. We have lots of electronics and controllers and variable frequency drives and uh analyzers, and so uh work at the plant is uh is ongoing. Uh, other programs and activities, um again, Aquarian website, I can't stress enough uh the significance and importance of the AquarianWater.com website. There's so much information there about Aquarian and what we're doing, whether it's uh water conservation. Uh, for example, we have the Environmental Champion Awards, uh which is going to take place in June, but we're looking for nominations now. If you know of a a a nonprofit company or organization or a student or an adult that's doing something that's good for the environment, uh you can nominate them, it's free of charge. If you are involved in uh a not-for-profit, you can nominate yourself as well. There are a number of categories. We also have a very popular rain barrel program. Uh, so we're selling rain barrels at seventy-five dollars per uh rain barrel, new orders uh through May sixth. Aquarian doesn't make any money on the rain barrel program. It's uh just a program that we have to help, again, to encourage folks uh to conserve water, and then also, we're out in the community. Uh, you'll see Aquarian's uh water truck at various uh events. For example, I uh I volunteered to man the Aquarian Water Truck uh for a road race down by Fairfield, the uh beach, the five K uh uh race, if any of you down there probably saw me there with the water truck. And we also have Earth Day projects uh throughout our community where Aquarian uh employees volunteer their time uh to do projects in 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 different uh communities. Their water quality testing and and reporting, um we're, I think, we do hundreds of thousands of uh water quality tests every year. Uh, and you can go again on the website, you can find the full water quality report. We do also mail these out to uh to folks. Uh, but if you take a look at the eighteen major areas that we look at, everything from barium, the copper, to fluoride, to lead, to nitrate. Uh, we look at things like the uh microbial, like turbidity, uh chlorine as far as disinfectant, uh color, pH, we are in compliance for all the major categories. So the water quality reports are also another uh great source of information in terms of the great quality of the water that we're receiving. Also, we are looking at the, you know, one of the uh newer contaminants out there, in terms of uh folks paying attention to and being aware of are these uh PFAS, uh it's big. So uh PFAS, if you look uh Fairfield, generally uh, you know, just about all of your water is coming from uh surface water uh reservoirs. So if you look at the uh the second row there, below Trap Falls, the Hemlocks Reservoir, uh as far as PFAS, uh non-detect the last time that we checked there. Uh, and again, I think it's mainly because of the surface water. And if you look at the current Connecticut DPH guideline, it's not a maximum contamination level, those we think will be coming out later this year, but their guideline is uh is anything uh above a seventy parts per trillion. But we're uh in good, you know, good shape in terms of Fairfield's water uh supply. We also monitor unregulated contaminants like uh manganese and uh other uh contaminants as well, and and you can see, again, this in the water quality report. So we try to stay ahead of the curve as well. Everything is uh for Fairfield is in range, we have great uh water quality, I I, in my opinion, great uh tasting water as well. And that is the uh extent of my presentation. I will try to unshare somehow unless the host can do that for me, and then I'll take any uh any questions you may have.
Thank you, George.
Thank you, George.
Um. I think you have to. I think it's your computer that's causing the echo, according to Dave Kelly. Um. So it's gonna be a little difficult for us to ask your questions. I don't know how we're gonna work this. Um, okay. So I think the first thing that comes to mind, obviously, that came to my mind when you first originally brought this up was um this is gonna be a shock to, you know, our residents and all of that. Obviously, uh Fairfield cares deeply about conservation efforts. Um, but, you know, people like to have their lawns green, and one of the biggest questions, I think, uh really are uh regarding our golf courses, we do have a number of them in town, and also our playing fields. We get a a serious uh amount of uh complaints that come to our Park and Rec Department, that our fields don't look good, and they're not, you know, and and so I think this obviously would add to it. Are they exempt because of the size of them, George? You're on mute, sorry.
Sure, but you'd have to, you know, let us know, right? We have that exemption process, just so we can be aware of it, and then we'll ask questions like, what would be the, what will be the usage uh during this uh period between April and October. But uh yes, you should not uh, uh we are not in a drought situation, right, per se, right now. We do want your fields to look good, to look good. Um, we certainly would ask that uh you don't overdo it, but no, we wouldn't necessarily expect the twice per week watering, uh if uh the request is uh is made.
Okay, so you you mentioned something over to, you know, um you know, to, these fields get used a lot, right, by the kids, and um, you know, I have my Park and Rec Director on here, who obviously can speak um more closely about the rain gauge, you know, you were mentioning earlier something about if you have a system that has the rain um that it gauges if it's if it's wet.
Controller, yeah, weather-based controller. Yeah, some irrigation systems, the newer ones, have control systems, but some, some have control systems where, you know, they they go on a certain period of time during the day, right? Uh, others can do the uh uh are weather-based, so if it's actually raining, that the that the irrigation system will not activate. That's what we mean by weather-based.
So if you wouldn't mind, I'm gonna ask our Anthony Calabrese, the Director of our Park and Rec Department. Anthony, do you know what we have?
Yeah, uh majority of our systems are weather-based controlled, so it knows if we got X amount of rain, that um the sprinklers won't go on. Um, so I do think that will fall into that variance for majority of our properties and our golf courses. Um, right now, just George, so you're aware, um, we normally uh water irrigate our fields three times per week in the rainy season. We do step that up in the summer, um in July to four, but but I do think we.
Yeah, again, yeah, again, yes, again, all you've got to do, you've got to apply for the variance, and we will certainly uh, you know, consider that, and that certainly sounds like a situation where uh more than twice per water may be necessary, particularly considering the use uh on the field. Uh, but again, we just need to be aware of that, and again, through the website, AquarianWater.com, uh even even the town can apply for that uh variance.
So when would we have to do that, by George?
As soon as possible, because we are, we are in the twice-per-week watering phase uh right now, so as soon as.
I'll head to the brand, uh.
Yeah, and again, you, you are the 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 town, right? The town of Fairfield is who we look to help to uh enforce this twice-per-week uh watering. There is no uh, you know, irrigation uh police out there, per se. Uh, we are all just trying to work together to try to, you know, make sure we encourage everyone to do the twice-per-week watering. And as I mentioned before, there are extenuating circumstances. We are not in any way, shape, or form going to be unreasonable about it. There is a reason, for example, for new plantings, or for example, uh town fields that may need more uh frequent watering. Uh, we are all here, we're, we're, we want to be very reasonable about this, and just, again, working together, working towards uh having people more uh in tune uh with water conservation, because it is the way forward. Uh, we are not uh going back from this. This is the new normal for us.
Right, I I understand. Can I also ask, um, should we, can you share that information with me, then I could share it with the private golf courses, or maybe they already know this? George, do you know?
So I would so, yeah, so I would say, you know, we have done things, for example, um where we have uh had meetings with um irrigation companies. Uh, golf courses, I cannot say uh for certain that every golf course is aware. We have reached out uh to some, but I I know, I I most likely all golf courses are not aware. Uh, so if the town could assist us with that as well, we would be more than appreciative of uh of that as well. Uh, and if you hear any grumblings, you know, my uh my number is two zero three, three nine five, four six one zero. Please don't hesitate uh to call me directly if you're wondering who at the water company you need to get a.
You repeat that number?
Sure, absolutely. Put it in a chat or something, right? Two zero three, three nine five, four six one zero.
Okay, George, you just opened yourself. And I I have, so don't worry about it.
Shall I have a?
Uh, Tom, when I'm finished, I'll call on the board. Um, so if you, George, can you send me just some of that information so that I can share it with the private golf courses
Absolutely, I'll have that to you tomorrow.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And um Anthony, did you have any additional questions about the fields?
I will get on filling out the variance immediately for all our properties.
Okay, thanks so much, Anthony, and thank you, George. I'm gonna open it up to the board now for questions.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Nancy.
Thank you. Um, just a question, and and I hear you, George, that you're saying, um, you know, you want to work with the community, and and I appreciate the the uh this perspective of conservation. There have been some inbound questions from residents who are growing food and using sprinkler systems as opposed to drip systems, which can be more costly. So what kind of uh space are you going to allow for those people who are using their water to grow food over this, the spring, summer months?
Yeah, so I mean, clearly, if you're uh you're growing food, and again, uh we have that exemption, and there's a way for, apply for variance. Uh, just need to apply for the variance and let us know what the uh use is for, and um beyond the twice-per-week watering, and we will certainly uh, so then, I mean, what we do there is we just add them to a a list in terms of uh those folks who have variances, so that we don't, they don't get bothered with notifications and the like.
Yeah, and that variance process. It it's a pretty, a pretty simple process for people who either don't have access to the internet, or had like, maybe that can be shared through the first select, select woman's communications, but just something to really make that process simple and easy and and.
simple and easy, and remembering that not everybody who's growing food also has access to online, the ability to fill out forms and whatnot.
Yeah, under, understood, we'll provide that. And also, I just wanted to mention to you that the golf course, there's a separate variance form for the golf courses. Because that's a, you know, such a special, unique use, just an FYI there. So you'll get a couple of different versions of the form there.
Could you just briefly talk about what that variance process is for those people looking for the exemptions and residents who are growing food?
Sure, I mean, it's a bit of an audit, really, you know, where we're pretty much just asking what is the purpose of the, of the variance? What's the usage for? And just to give some sort of estimate in terms of the amount of water you think you'll be utilizing, whether you think you need to water, you know, for an hour twice a day, or is it two days, is it once every day? It's a pretty reasonable audit, there's nothing extraneous about it, there's, there'll be no need for, you know, consultant helper report, it's, it's pretty benign from that standpoint.
But is it a phone call, is it online? I'm sorry, I don't mean to.
No, it's online, I'm sorry, no, it's online, aquariumwater.com.
And for those people that don't have access online, are they able to do it over the phone?
Um, I don't know, but over the phone, no. We do have the phone, I would, I would just recommend that if someone doesn't have access online, and they can't get to the local public library, they can certainly give me a call, and I'd be more than happy to fill out the form for them.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you.
That's it, I have no further questions.
Thank you, Nancy. And Tom, do you have some questions?
Yeah, briefly, looking at the presentation, and I read it before you gave it, and then listened to you give it. And it was disjointed in my mind because it was, the front part of the presentation was all about, hey, the reservoirs, thank God, they're at a nice big level right now. Rainfall is increasing all over the place in New England. We're having these weather events now, it's caused other issues, you know, with the soil erosion, with, with things getting in and the water needed to be treated. So certainly it's raised your operating cost and raised the cost perhaps to our, to our taxpayers on their water bills and the like. And, and I get that, and I understand it. And then, of course, you can have these periods of droughts, and we have had some of them, and we've had a cutback. But why are we cutting back now when we're not in a period of drought? And the thing that, you know, Brendan said some of the things that are top of mind are the fields and golf courses. I agree. The other thing that's top of mind is the town of Fairfield just worked with you guys over the last couple of years regarding this issue about diversion of water to areas down south, in the southern county, that were having water restrictions and issues. And it's going to look to our residents as though, yeah, we agreed to that, now all of a sudden they have these high-end sprinkler systems that they're only allowed to use twice a week. And we've got these water patrols going around, or they're going to tattle on them and go to the First Select Woman about it. Walk me through that.
Sure, so in the presentation, if you recall, when I gave the example of the Barge Reservoir in Stanford.
You showed it, the picture, yeah.
So in June, in June of that year, the reservoir was spilling, was completely full. And by November, it was down to a bit of a trickle. So these droughts are coming fast and furious. So it's important for us, for us to conserve and save as much of the water as we can, because these flash droughts are occurring, you know, without any notice. So we could be in a healthy situation to the reservoir levels now, just as we were in 2016. And by the fall, there is the chance that we could be in a drought situation. So the idea is to conserve and save as much of the precious water that we.
And you're saying that that's happening more frequently now?
Yes, that is true. Yeah, even, even as recently as 2020, we hit the third drought trigger. Didn't get as bad as 2016, but we hit the third drought trigger, and in some communities, not including Fairfield, the town of Fairfield, we had to institute irrigation ban. So yes, due to climate change, we believe that more frequent droughts in the data is showing that as well.
So even though we're getting a lot more rain, according to your presentation, I don't, I'm just talking about the presentation. We're still running out of water, or we're hitting these drought triggers more frequently, even though there's more water available theoretically. And what does the fact that we diverted all this water do to Fairfield? Is that another contributing factor to this, why the residents of Fairfield are, are going to have this issue?
I would say no, and remember, keep in mind that when we're talking about flash droughts, during those periods of flash droughts, during those periods of flash droughts, there's less rain than normal, and that is why the flash droughts occur. So again, the fact that our reservoirs are nearly full now, just as they were in 2016, is, does not necessarily mean that in the fall we'll continue to be as lucky in terms of the level of precipitation because of the frequency of these flash droughts. And as far as the.
Do you monitor it? In terms of, can these restrictions be changed in the course of a season?
Sure, we absolutely monitor reservoir levels. But again, because of the pattern where, again, generally it's wetter during the springs, reservoirs fill during the spring. If we're fortunate, they're full by the time we hit the summer peaks. And then hopefully, we get some rain, but it's hard to predict what level of rain we're going to have during the summer and the fall. So we have to take precautions now to try to do what we can to, to save as much of the precious resource that we have.
Yeah, I'm not against conservation, clearly, but I want to understand, and I want to know what impact the diversion had and all that. And I apologize, I think I cut you off on that point.
Sure, the diversion permit that we applied for, see, thus far, hasn't had any impact, because we haven't increased the diversion amounts down to western Fairfield County. The requirement is there because of the frequent, more frequent droughts, we need to have the ability to move water around. The entire water system is one regional system, even the water supply for Fairfield, Fairfield doesn't come from just Fairfield, right? It comes from the Sawtucket Reservoir, 12 billion gallons, that's in Weston. The watershed is in Redding, it's in Weston. The Ascotuck Reservoir is in Easton, half of the Hemlocks Reservoir is in Easton as well. This is a regional system, and so the region, we're just expanding to all of, all of Fairfield County, so that we have the ability to move water around as needed, particularly during drought periods, and particularly over the course of time where growth patterns could change throughout the region. But thus far, we have not increased our diverted amount to lower southwestern Fairfield County.
So this is even before any diversion takes place?
I'm sorry, Mr. Flynn, what is before any diversion takes place?
The restrictions that we're putting out there.
Yes, this is weather, yeah, this is weather-based, right? And it affects the entire region, whether it's Fairfield or Greenwich. These drought floods are impacting us all. So it's behooves us to, you know, to act and plan and anticipate these problems before that.
My last question, because I know we have a big, Jen, and thank you.
Oh, sure.
What do we expect the First Select Woman's Office to do when you give her this list of frequent flyer offenders?
Well, it's a rarity that we get to the third notice, it's an extreme rarity. Many times, most times, it's a matter of the property owner wasn't aware of the twice-per-week watering. Usually they adjust, you know, some, you know, some do not, and we do our best to inform them with information and the impact of their water use, and what it has on the environment. So generally speaking, it has been very effective. As I mentioned, we have yet to shut anyone off because of, you know, being a continued offender. Usually the, you know, information and making them aware of their water use above normal usually does the, does the trick. And, you know, if, if necessary, perhaps, knowing that the town is on board as well with water conservation, it, it helps to change the behavior of residents at times. It has been pretty effective thus far, so we're expanding that. Again, it's a matter of getting the word out and getting the information out to the community. And that's why we're going through so many channels, be it, you know, social media, be it the local publications, and also obviously working with our local town officials as well.
And you guys are investing, I heard you say, in your infrastructure and everything else, presumably to help with any leakage in the system, and to be more efficient with getting water out to us and to the citizens.
Absolutely, yeah, I'm glad you mentioned that, Mr. Flynn, yeah, absolutely. For leak detection, and what we call our unaccounted-for water, we do our best to try to minimize that. And we have, every day, we have folks that are going out there trying to find leaks throughout the, the system, so we can stay that off. We are a regulated, right, entity?
Yep.
And so the Connecticut Public Utility Regulatory Authority also is, expects and demands that we do that as well. We have to report to them where we are in terms of unaccounted-for water and non-revenue water, and what our, our plans are and have been. And, and what has been the effect of that? For example, they generally want to see anywhere between 10% and 15% maximum unaccounted for water. And that's why, in addition to meeting with the Board of Selectmen throughout the community, we're also meeting with fire departments as well, because whenever we use water to fight fires, or, or the town uses water that is not billed directly, we want to know how much is used so that we can, it's still non-revenue, but we want to take it away from this unaccounted-for water category. So the community is involved, involved there as well, and I'd be getting around and providing similar presentations to fire departments, catered a little differently, because I talk about the water system in a little bit more detail for them, pressure zones and that sort of thing. But it's an, it's an all-out effort to trumpet the water conservation method, message, and, you know, we cannot do it without the support of local towns.
Well, yeah, I'll leave it, I'm, I'm done, thank you so much for your time. You've got to be the only company in the world, industry, that's trying to sell less of their product.
I, I hear you. Hey, and if I could just really quickly just mention that we have decoupled rates here. So the Connecticut Pura has set us up in a, in a, in a way that it does encourage even water utility to conserve water, because we are not penalized for trying to conserve water to our.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, George. Okay, so you're going to send me that information. I do want to note that I did put this in a newsletter, I don't remember which one, we did put information about this. You know, to give people a heads up, obviously, you know, people are, you know, we're going to, we're going to be hearing from people. I'm going to be hearing from people, thank you, Mr. Logan.
I can imagine.
I absolutely will, yes, I will. And you'll send me that information so that I can let the private golf courses, obviously, that's their business, to provide green grass for golfing, and our, our fields, again, it's, I can't emphasize it enough, I know that Anthony said he's going to jump on that, and he will. He always does jump on things that need to be taken care of, but that's going to be something we're going to have to work on. All right, George, well, thank you so much, it was nice to see you.
I appreciate the time, and perhaps I'll see you again next month when we talk about our capital improvement plans. And we'll get into more detail, the diversion permit, then reliance and reliability of our water systems as well. So thank you for the time.
Awesome, thanks, George, have a good evening. All right, our next item is item number five. This is the Purchasing Authority to hear and consider and authorize the purchasing authority to enter into a proposed contract with Grucci Fireworks to provide labor materials, equipment, all else necessary for independent, say, fireworks celebration event. And the information about the bid is enclosed in the agenda. For the pricing detailed in its bid submission, not to cost more than $54,862. And can I get a motion to approve before we open it up?
So moved.
And I'll second it.
Okay, and we have Gerald Foley and Anthony Calabrese on the line. Anthony, do you want to kick off?
Sure thing, Anthony Calabrese, Director of Park Preparation. As First Select Woman had just read, we put out our fireworks out to bid a, I believe, a year or two ago, and this is an extension of that contract, same company that's been doing it. And we've got our date on there, and the fee has increased slightly, so we do have that in our budget, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Anthony. Is there anyone from the board that has a question?
Quickly, quickly, standard questions. This has gone through the bid process, and the town attorney signed off on this, I'm assuming, and we check very specifically about insurance and the like related to these?
Yes, and that's all included in the backup.
Yeah, I just wanted to post it on the record. And Mr. Foley, nothing to add, Mr. Baldwin, nothing to add?
Town Attorney Jim Baldwin, I have nothing to add.
Okay. I'm good with this.
Yeah, I don't have any questions.
All right, thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Our next item is item number six. Can I get a motion to hear and consider and act upon the following resolution recommended by Fair TV? Nancy, do you want to make a motion to?
I'm happy to waive the, to make a motion to waive the reading of this, please.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So basically, this is just our standard contract with Jerry Spino for Fair TV. The contract's obviously been looked at by the town attorney, or it wouldn't be on the agenda. And it's for one year, June 30th, 2022, terminating July 1, 2023. Motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Okay, and is there any discussion on this item?
The only question I have is, I'm assuming that this is all within their budget and the like. Ms. Jared, can you just confirm that?
I, I can confirm that, the 58, 280 is the amount in the budget.
Okay, I'm good, thank you.
All right, is there anybody on the public who would like to comment on this item? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, thank you, excuse me. Item number seven, can I get a motion to, oh no, this, yes, to hear, to motion to hear, consider and authorize the First Select Woman to enter into a pilot program agreement between the town of Fairfield and Bird Rides Incorporated to operate a stand-up electric scooter sharing system within the town of Fairfield. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved. Seconding.
Okay, thanks. Obviously, this is a pilot program, you were sent some background information before I handed it over to Mark. This was brought to our attention, I want to say, about maybe six months ago. And, you know, obviously, we, you know, probably had this, I'm sure we had the same questions that the board's going to have, and the general public's going to have, you know, do we need these? Or, you know, we've, we've all read articles and probably seen on the news, and sometimes, you know, places they've been, you hear these stories about them just being dumped and left, and, and they become a bit of a nuisance. We asked all those questions when it was first proposed to us. Mark, I think, did a good job working on this, this is a pilot program. Apparently, they're going to be picking up these things, there's a whole system in place. And so after those questions were answered, and we felt like it would be an interesting thing to try in the town, to see if it would be something of interest to our community to use. And so that's why it's before you today. And so I am going to hand it over to Mark, and he can give a little bit more color.
Thank you, Madam First Select Woman, Mark Barnhart, Director of Community Economic Development for the town. Joined by Jeremy Lynch from Bird Rides, who's also in attendance today virtually. Actually, we've been looking at this for some time, and talked to a number of communities in terms of their experience. But what we have, what we're presenting to you this, this afternoon is a pilot program, operating agreement that would authorize Bird and the town to operate a 12-month pilot program in the town. That would give us the opportunity to evaluate the demand from consumers as to the, the service, as well as better assess any operational issues based on that usage. We have been looking at Bird for some time now, one of the things with Bird is that they're, they provide a local fleet manager that is responsible for overseeing the fleet. They also. They also, Bird also specializes or is more responsive to smaller communities and providing smaller fleets that are more appropriate for communities this size. So we're proposing an initial fleet of about 50 to 75 scooters that would be available for rent. There is no cost to the town. There is a modest revenue share proposed in the agreement at which 20 cents per ride. They will provide the standard insurance and indemnification requirements consistent with our requirements. So that language is included therein. As I mentioned, we have talked to not only other communities throughout the country, as far away as Kansas and North Carolina, but closer to home in New York and Connecticut, Bridgeport, with respect to their experience. And we've gotten favorable comments and reviews in terms of Bird's responsiveness. In addition, we've talked to other departments, including the Police Department, as well as the Fairfield Bike and Ped Committee. I know you have received a letter in your pocket from the police chief, as well as an email from the Chair of the Bike Ped Committee. I didn't have the foresight when I talked to them to ask them to actually endorse the proposal, but I'm going back to talk to them this month to just give them an update. But they were in favor of this proposal. So again, I'm happy to answer any questions. I know Jeremy can answer questions on the technical side in terms of the scooters. But again, we're thinking that a pilot is a great way for us to try it out without making a long-term commitment and then being in a better position to understand what the demand is for this type of service from our resident base, as well as to look at any operational issues that may arise and then deal with those appropriately. But the local fleet manager function is there to supervise and ensure that the scooters are relocated, they're maintained regularly and they're recharged and relocated to areas of most in need. So at this time, I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Thanks, Mark. And I'll open it up to the board. Go ahead, Nancy.
Thank you. And forgive my voice. I am in post-COVID recovery.
Oh, sorry to hear that.
Yeah.
Are you okay?
I mean, finally. It's been rough.
Really?
It's another subject for another time, but really rough. I am getting healthier. Thank you.
That's good to hear.
Thank you. I spoke to Mark earlier and I just wanted to share that I have a healthy, both optimism and skepticism of this. I'm supportive of it because I think we won't know until we don't try it. You know, I think we got one letter opposing it. But, and I wanted that resident to understand, to hear that, you know, we hear those concerns, but until we try it, we're not going to know. And so I've been in communities where they've had successful programs and I've used the product. And I think it's something that we should try to see because why not? And if it doesn't work, we've lost nothing. So I just wanted to, hopefully, we've lost nothing except time and the investment of some energy and some resources. But I think it is a worthy endeavor to try because the upside is, could be potentially rewarding. So that's why it has my support, at least for this trial phase.
Thank you.
I think, yeah, I think Nancy actually summed it up quite well. So thank you, Nancy. And I'm exactly where you are on this. The only item I would add to this is my biggest concern on the, on the front face of this relates to any legal issues that we could entertain. Mr. Baldwin, I don't know, you know, you get these slip and fall cases all the time. And I understand we're indemnified, you know, with the scooter company and that. But what if somebody comes and says it's because a sidewalk had an issue and somebody was on a scooter and hit something in a sidewalk and did that, as opposed that they, you know, misoperated the scooter or the scooter malfunctioned or something like that? So, you know, where my biggest concern would be on this issue, where I'm looking for some comfort is relative to legal issues. And certainly, while I have those issues as we go through a pilot program, that's definitely, if we consider moving forward with this after a year, that's definitely something I would really want looked into even more. So I don't know if you have anything to say, Mr. Baldwin, or what you've gleaned.
Yes, this is Jim Baldwin, Town Attorney. I took a very hard look at the indemnification terms and the general principles of municipal liability in the context of this pilot program and going beyond the pilot program, should it go in that direction. And I am very comfortable with those terms. This is, this is like someone operating their own personal scooter on the road. The town's exposure in that situation is the same as what we're exposed to here, if not worse compared to what we have here. So if anything, that those, those terms are better than what you would normally have.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Baldwin.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Well, if there's no further questions, I'm going to open it up for public comment before we take a vote and ask if there's anybody on the line who would like to share an opinion or a comment. Okay, seeing none. I'll bring it back to the board. All in favor?
Aye.
Tom?
Apologies. Aye. I was on mute.
Very good. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, everyone. And, okay. Our next item is item number eight. Can I get a motion to hear and consider and approve a recommendation from the Town Planning and Zoning Commission to opt out of the state mandated parking regulations in default language for accessory apartments pursuant to Public Act 21-29? And I believe we have Mr. Went, our illustrious zoning director, on the line. And he can explain a little bit more about this item and then we will open it up to the board. I'll hand it over to you, Mr. Went.
Nick, can I move the item?
Oh, sure.
Move it.
Sure.
So I'll move it.
Nancy?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Thank you. Go ahead, Jim.
Good afternoon. Jim Went, Planning Director. Public Act 2129, which was approved last year by the legislature, re-made amendments to the zoning-enabling act. And among the 28 pages of that bill, there were two areas which created certain prescribed language that's required to be adopted within local zoning regulations. The first is with regard to the number of parking spaces for residential uses and the other is with regard to accessory apartments. In both cases, this act provides for a means for your municipality to opt out of these requirements. The opt-out process requires a public hearing and an affirmative vote of two-thirds of the Planning and Zoning Commission, which has already occurred. To complete the process, the act requires also the approval of the Board of Selectmen. So the TPZ held hearings on both of these matters on January the 25th of this year. With regard to the parking mandates, the parking requirements are that the zoning regulations shall not require more than one parking space for a studio or one-bedroom dwelling unit and not more than two parking spaces for a dwelling unit with two or more bedrooms. Our current zoning regulations for the majority of residential development is consistent with or actually prescribes less than what these new maximums require. But there are some cases in the TPZ believes that larger developments that are not near transit warrant additional parking that our regulations currently require. And therefore, they voted unanimously to opt out of that requirement on February the 8th. With respect to accessory apartments, the act requires municipalities to first adopt accessory apartment regulations and then there was prescribed language. This isn't a huge change for us. Fairfield has had permitted us, we've had accessory apartments in our regulations since 1986. Our current regulations are pretty similar to the state-required language, but there's two key provisions that gave rise to the Planning and Zoning Commission voting to opt out. Firstly, the statutory language would require apartments to be permitted on any lot that contains a single-family dwelling regardless of what zone it might be in. And we currently prohibit accessory apartments in the Beach District. And given the unique and discreet geography of the Beach District, the Commission believes that accessory apartments should remain prohibited in that district. And secondly, the statutory language requires that accessory apartments be allowed in detached structures in any district. Our regulations were recently amended to allow detached units in our two-acre, one-acre and half-acre zones. But the Commission believes that detached units should not be permitted in smaller zone districts. So for those two reasons, the Commission also voted unanimously to opt out of the state mandated language on March the 22nd. So we have two votes of the Commission to opt out of the parking and the accessory apartment regs. It requires your consideration and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Jim. Open up to the board for questions?
I think I'm okay.
Yeah, I'm fine on this, Adam. Thank you.
Wow, Jim, you did such a good job.
Yeah, it was. Thank you. That was helpful.
Appreciate your consideration.
Very concise, for sure. And I think this is a good one. And so I'm going to ask all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry, before voting, is this something that we open up for the public if there is?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You're right.
Sorry, I just didn't want.
Yes. Is there anyone on the line who would like to comment on this item? Okay.
I didn't, I wasn't, I didn't think so. I just wanted to make sure.
No, no, that's fine, Nancy. I apologize. I should have done that. I had it written in big letters for myself. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thanks so much. Thank you, Jim.
Appreciate your time and attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is item number nine. The fire chief actually texted me. He had the meeting at the fire training school. We have our illustrious assistant fire chief, deputy fire chief, excuse me, Karen Dunn. And this item is to hear and consider and adopt a bond resolution entitled the Resolution Appropriating $125,000 for the costs to replace the portable radio equipment for the fire department and authorizing the issuance of bonds to such, finance such appropriation. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second it.
So I just want to give a little background here. As you can, as you may have remembered, this was in our operating budget. That was passed through the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Finance chose to cut this out and requested that I bring this before the town bodies for bonding. So that is what they did at the Board of Finance meeting. I did bring this item up at our capital planning workshop last week, I believe. Yes. We had the fire chief and Karen at the meeting explaining this item in full detail, as well as members of our police department, because obviously, this whole system is part of a bigger system that allows them to connect to other municipalities and to be able to connect to the state system, which we are woefully behind it. And I know some people think, well, why isn't this part of the larger system? But this is just the first piece for the fire. We did get a grant that goes toward the overall changing of our infrastructure and system. That's going to have police, fire, and then hopefully, our other departments. It is a large expenditure to get up to speed. It's a little over seven, I think, million. We got 3.5 from the federal delegation. And so this 125 is for the radios. And Karen can speak a little bit more clearly on this. But I just wanted to give some color as to why this item is here before us today. And I'll hand it to you, Karen. Do you want to add anything to that?
Sure. That's basically, it's just that, you know, the overall project had been anticipated. But so for each year, for the, for the past few fiscal years, we haven't put in any radio replacements like we normally do have in the budget, you know, because it's wear and tear and just replacing different pieces. Because we anticipated that the large project to go forward. And since it's not yet ready to, ready to roll, we really have to catch up and buy at least a handful of portable radios so that we can use on mutual aid. Because it actually just happened this morning. It happened on Wednesday where we went to Norwalk and Bridgeport respectively. And we're not on their bands anymore because they already made the change over to the new system. So it's kind of critical that we are at least able, when we go off the fire engine or actually when we're responding, to be able to talk directly to their dispatchers on their frequency, to then get on the scene and be able to talk to their chief officers. Where do you want us? Do you want us at the scene? Do you want us in the firehouses? So it's kind of critical. At least this will get us in a stopgap. So, and the good portion, part of this, though, is that any radios that we buy now are 100% compatible with that new system. So when we do roll out that new radio system, the X amount of radios that we anticipated buying in that project, it will be, we'll be able to subtract these 11 radios that we're asking for now. So it's not wasted money and it's not, you know, throwing good money somewhere bad.
Thank you, Karen. I'll open it up to the board for any questions on this item.
Nancy, do you want to go? And then I'll go after you.
Go ahead.
Okay. And feel better, by the way. First of all, congratulations on getting the grant. I know the effort and the time that that took. And I was happy to be involved in the early stages. You guys brought me in and kind of stepped me through it. So I'm well acquainted with the overall project and it has my support. And I think it's great what it's going to allow and the safety it's going to provide, not just locally but regionally. So good luck with that. Secondly, detailed on this, how often do we need to buy these radios? And how long will these radios last? And does the bond term, is it consistent with the life, the estimated useful life of these radios?
So I think the bond life is a Jared question. I see Jared here. But we believe, like, the fire department, we keep things, you know, until they break or they're unsupported. We have radios that are 15 years old. Sometimes one will break in a fire after two years. But we definitely are hoping to keep these at least for 10 years, which I think was the initial thought of the bond. But Jared might be able to speak to that.
Jared, is that right? I think you're on mute, Jared. Or you're not.
Yes. Yes, that's correct. You'll see in the resolution, this is a 10-year bond, you know, consistent with what they anticipate to be the life of the equipment.
So Karen, how often are we going to have to, okay, they're going to last 10 years. Are we going to be buying 11 radios a year all the time?
No, no. Well, what should happen, hopefully, if this major project goes along, is that we will buy a chunk of radios whenever this happens. Maybe it's a year and a half, maybe it's two years down the line. And we will have a large amount of radios. But that radio project is not just, you know, hardware, the handhelds or the mobile radios, but it's also the whole framework, the backbone of the system, which is a transmitter and all.
Yeah, no, I'm talking very specifically about the 11 radios. Like, are we going to be buying 11 radios annually? You know, now, my understanding, let me put words in your mouth for a second. We're going to get a ton of radios upfront with this project. So there's going to be a period of years where we're not going to buy any. But then we're going to get to a point where we need to replace those radios. And is it anticipated that that'll be an annual expenditure? Or a lump sum expenditure when those radios are done? You see what I'm saying?
Yes. So I, my answer is that I do think that it will be a long time before we have to even, you know, put anything in the budget. I mean, it's going to be years, maybe five years down the line. We'll put in for a handful just to, for the normal wear and tear of things. We, and I think it would be after that point, maybe it is good because then it spreads out, you know. You know, we don't like to buy a chunk of things when we can avoid that.
So essentially, for this element of this project, we're capitalizing the initial phase of it because we are not going to have to replace it within the next few years. But eventually, we're going to get to a point where much like a vehicle replacement program or something like that, where we're going to have to, it's going to be an operating cost to the town in the sense that it's going to be recurring annually.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Okay, no, I appreciate that. And as you already answered, these radios will work with the new system once that's installed, right? And last question for Mr. Baldwin. I'm assuming, and just I's dotted, T's crossed here, that the bond resolutions are our standard bond resolutions. They've gone through bond council and there's nothing hunky or funky with our bond resolution.
I am not able to, to address the bond resolution language because I'm not bound counsel, but I trust that attorney's staff. attorney staff has reviewed it and has helped craft it. Is that right, Jim?
That's correct.
Great.
Baldwin, yes.
Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate it. I've got nothing.
Thank you, everyone. All right.
Can I ask you a question, Madam First Selectwoman?
Sure.
Something about the Board of Finance meeting. I I missed what you were saying about you brought it up with them. I I just missed that first part of what you had said.
No, I was just giving some background. So this I was just saying that this item originally was in the operating budget that I had presented to the Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
And then the Board of Finance cut it out and said to bond it.
Okay.
So that's why.
I got it. I thought I missed something. Thank you. I have no further questions.
Gotcha. Okay. All right. If there's no further questions from the board, I'll open it up for public comments. Does anyone have a comment on this item? Okay, seeing none. Back to the board. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All righty.
Thanks, Chief.
Our next item is item number ten. Can I get a motion to hear, consider and authorize the town of Fairfield enter into the proposed amend amendment agreement with the Fairfield Historical Society for the management of the Fairfield Historical Structures effective May one through April thirtieth, twenty twenty three? Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Second. Okay.
And I'm going to open it up. We have Anthony Calabrese on the line. This is mostly just this is changing sort of the structure we've had in the past where the history museum, most notably, was managing the Burr Mansion and they were renting out handling all of that for the events that happened there. And there was a lot of public interest in this. As you know, the board received a lot of emails. Somebody's saying they don't see Anthony anymore. Okay. So we got a lot of emails and such regarding this issue. And so Mike Jaley, the director of the History Museum, you know, came to me with some members of his boards. We had several meetings to discuss this, these items. And then it Mike Michael had said, you know, he thought that it might be in the best interest for the museum to no longer control the events happening at the Burr. It was kind of taking them off their mission and it wasn't really beneficial to them. And so we discussed it at length and Anthony was obviously in these meetings because it would be him who would take it over and he did. And Attorney Baldwin was very involved in this as well for months and months, working back and forth on this agreement to 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 transfer this item to the town. And so that's sort of a little bit bit of background. I just text Anthony because I don't see him. I don't know if he had a connection issue. Attorney Baldwin, do you want to just jump in and talk a little bit and I'll see if Anthony comes back on?
Sure. I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
It's essentially the the same agreement that the town entered into with the Historical Society years ago. However, we just carved out the Burr Mansion and their responsibilities and the revenues that were gained from that. And the town also paid, I think, thirty six thousand dollars to the Historical Society for management fees associated with managing the Burr complex. And that was reduced by two thirds. So they're still getting a management fee for management of the other properties that are still included within the grounds. And in essence, that's that's what this boils down to.
Thank you. And I also see that Mike Mike Jaley is on the line. Hi, Mike.
I do have a.
Anthony will be signing back on in a moment or so. Sure, go right ahead.
Well, my questions are would be directed to Anthony to to understand what sort of burden he would be taking on and how it impacts his department and how he's functioning and.
He's actually pretty, I have to say, Anthony is like the jack of all trades. The guy never stops. He pretty much worked the entire holiday weekend. He got called up to ward because people were upset about the field. He got called to Lincoln Park because people were upset about the new playground going in. He was here on Good Friday, meeting with the neighbors regarding the sound system and because the neighbors had given some good detail on how they would like, you know, a sound barrier sort of put on the corner of the tent and music playing so that directing a certain way so it would be a bit mitigate the sound a bit for the neighbors. So he did meet with neighbors on Friday here because the tent was going up and has been in constant communication with them. And.
My question is less about because I know Anthony is obviously, you know, a super Superman in that way and a workhorse. It's less about the person and more about the process and the department sort of removing the person from the equation. What it does in terms of taxing the department and what they're, you know, on the hook for and if a less Superman liked, you know, person was in that position, what does it do for for the workload? That's I'm just kind of thinking bigger picture, but.
Right.
In theory, I it makes sense to have the Parks and Rec Department oversee it. I just want to make sure we're not adding a burden that we aren't thinking about.
Anthony's trying to get on. He's texting me. So, okay, I'll just say this, that we took over the reservations that the History Center had on the books already for twenty twenty two and some of twenty twenty three, whatever they had on there. We decided not to book any new reservations as of yet. We wanted to kind of get our feet in and see how it goes. There is money that comes in a little, you know, the profit sort of, let's say, from from the events. And Allison, who was working for the museum, Michael, it could jump in if I'm not saying it right. She's going to be now paid from us to manage what she was doing. She does the booking. She is on site. She works with the staff. So that'll stay the same pretty much. DPW was doing a lot of activity already for these events. You know, it's been some, you know, little bit of extra work for Anthony and Galen. They, you know, he had to meet the tent people. We had to go back and forth, the electric electrical lights, all that. But other than that, I think I think we're doing okay. And we're not sure, you know, how we're going to be moving forward here. You know, obviously, Penfield is going to be stopping events in October because we have this, you know, unsure unsurety about where what we're going to be doing with with underneath the facility and also with the facility. So we thought this might be a good opportunity to utilize the Burr if we need to. So we still haven't gotten around to that part yet, but I do see Anthony's back on now. And Anthony, the question from Nancy was, is this going to be an overburden for you? Is this going to be a lot of extra work? That kind of thing.
And not you specifically because we all know what you're capable of and you're a superhero and we all acknowledge how hard you work. So I don't want to, you know, it's more about the department and the process.
Yep. No, and I appreciate it. No, I wouldn't have agreed to put my department in this position if I didn't think we could handle it. This, you know, running events and whether they're weddings or corporate events and anything of that nature. This is kind of in our wheelhouse and with with Penfield coming offline in the near future, this will obviously make it a lot easier to focus on, you know, the Burr and the event at Jackie Durrell. You know, when Penfield comes back up, you know, that might be a different discussion. But again, right now, it looks like we're only looking at this year and next year with events until we figure out, you know, how the administration wants to move forward with the building. But no, my staff is on board and excited at this opportunity.
Okay, great. Thanks.
I had a question that goes in a different way than Nancy went. I'm not so much concerned. There's a lot of reasons that this makes sense to put kind of invent management, event planning with our two other facilities. Not just Anthony, what you were just saying, because they're coming offline, but just in general, right? It seems like it belongs there. So from that perspective, it makes sense. The only comment I have is, as opposed to dealing with those buildings, now you're dealing with a historical property. And what are the rules of the road and the guidelines related to, you know, maintaining the historical integrity of the property and the building and using it for these events? How how has that been sussed sussed out and thought through?
Yep. So we've had conversations with Mike Jaley at the museum. I believe Mike is on to, you know, to kind of help guide us through that process. James Ryan from our building maintenance, you know, our building maintenance supervisor, he's been handling the the maintenance of this building, you know, since he's worked here. So I know he's very familiar with the ins and outs of what we're allowed to do, what we're not, you know, allowed to do. But there's even, I don't want to say, you know, more hurdles with this one. But you do have the Burr Garden Advisory Committee that we have to work with. They oversee the Burr Gardens behind there. So, you know, and obviously the neighborhood group. So yeah, there's definitely a lot of moving parts on this one, but I think between myself and leaning on Mike, you know, Mike Jaley, we can get this done.
And do you want to jump in, Mike? You know, obviously, Mike is right here. This is a very collaborative effort. You know, this isn't an adversarial situation. This is just the town working with this three center. And Mike, did you want to elaborate a little bit on that?
Yeah, sure. This Mike Jaley, Executive Director of Fairfield Museum. Tom, you know, we're going to continue to work very closely as we have for decades with the town to ensure that all the historic preservation needs are met for these historic properties. And you know, that's that's one of the reasons that we're continuing and revising this management agreement is that, you know, this is a very successful public private partnership to ensure the care of these unique historic properties. And so we'll continue to advise and help in any way we we can possibly do. And I think that, as Anthony said, it just really made more sense to us for Parks and Rec that had the experience with event management to be taking that aspect of it.
And and I agree with that. And Mike, thank you. And A, I was not even contemplating that it would be adversarial. But I think, you know, as Nancy alluded to before, we know what Anthony's capable of. Mike, we know what you're capable of, right? For whatever reason, it might not always be you two guys in the chair. I think it would be smart to have kind of the, for lack of a better way to put it, in a more elegant way to put it, you know, the Ten Commandments of thou shalt not do this at Burr Mansion, thou shalt do this. Something that's written down and kind of codified to maintain the historical aspects of the building as opposed to, hey, we're going to have a conversation and make sure we don't do it. And I know you work collaboratively and all that. I would just feel more comfortable to make sure that we have something a little bit more formalized. Just because I I'm very concerned. I'm always very concerned with maintaining the historical aspects of of those buildings.
Well, and you know, Attorney Baldwin could maybe weigh in on this, but I think there is some leeway in the agreement that, you know, we are kind of on call to the to the town to advise on these issues. So I think it's already kind of addressed in the management agreement that we're here to to advise and help guide conservation issues.
Yeah, but there's a big difference between advise and thou shalt not, right? I mean.
Well, ultimately, it's a town property. So we're, you know, we're limited in what we can do beyond advising.
Except except that there's an agreement. Okay, this is one year, Brenda. I think for one year, this is much, much like the I'd love to see how this works on a trial basis and see and make sure that we're maintaining the building as as well as I'm sure they're going to do a nice job running the events there.
This is Attorney Baldwin. This is not for one year. This is going forward.
Okay, so why does this say here, May first, twenty twenty two through April thirtieth, twenty twenty three?
I believe that's because it automatically renews. It's called an evergreen agreement and it automatically renews every year thereafter. And that's the.
We can review, but we can review it in a year.
Yes.
All right. That's what I'd like to do. I'd like to review this in a year.
Right. The town owns the property and this is the management of the events, but we've always owned it and and we have maintained it, obviously, through DPW, although Mike has done a very good job at applying for and securing grants that have modernized the building and had done some really beautiful historical preservation to it. So goes to Mike in the History Center for that work, helping us keep that building in good repair and many of the buildings actually on our campus here.
Right.
All right. If there's no further questions, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Nice to see you, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
All right. Anthony, I think you're good. Thank you for coming on before. Coming back on anyway. All right, our next item on is item number eleven. Can I get a motion to hear, consider and authorize the First Selectwoman enter into a proposed three year lease with Robert Haydo Greenfield Farms to lease ten acres of the owned premises at thirty seven zero one Congress Street Fairfield for one dollar per year plus the assessed property taxes? Do you have a motion to approve the item? We could bring it up for discussion.
I was going to say, I'd like to actually make a motion to amend the item to take out, to act on it.
I think we have to. I think we have to approve.
We have to first approve to even discuss.
Okay, got it. Got it.
So we have a motion.
Yes, so I'll make the motion to approve.
I second.
Very good. Thank you. Attorney Baldwin, if you want to just talk about the contract, I know that there's some background information regarding this. It apparently wasn't done the way it was supposed to be done for a number of years and we're sort of been, we're bringing it up now to to make sure it's done appropriately. And then I'll open it up to the board for questions.
That's correct, Madam First Selectwoman. I I I sent an email to the members of the board explaining that this agreement seems to be somewhat of an anomaly insofar as more or less, the same agreement has been in place with the town between the town and Mr. Haydo for over twenty years. The property was purchased in nineteen ninety eight for nearly five million, I believe, with the land acquisition funds that were very popular at the time. It's a parcel of total purchase was over twenty acres. This concerns roughly half of that property, which was purchased in nineteen ninety eight by the town at the time, and I believe it still is the only working farm in Fairfield. And it had great appeal, apparently, based on my historical research to maintain that character of this property, that is, that it be continued to be used as a as a farm and the last remaining farm in in Fairfield. Mr. Haydo had an agreement with the owners to operate the farm and that obviously continued after the property was transferred to this to the town. Mr. Haydo lives on a parcel adjacent to it and he has a great deal of equipment that he's used over the years for the the farming that he performs there as well as holding public events for people. The the reason it never went before the Board of Selectmen before or the RTM for that matter or well, the reason it didn't go before the Board of Selectmen, as best I can tell, is because they believed at the time that the fair market value was maintaining the farm plus paying the applicable taxes. I think that it is more akin to a situation where it's a lease to a charitable organization because Mr. Haydo does provide events on behalf of the public. And it's just, in my view, falls more reasonably under the category of a lease to a charitable organization for nominal consideration under the Town Code, Section thirty five dash five H as opposed to five G. So that's why this is coming before you because it was brought to my attention and people were questioning why this was not previously presented to the Board of Selectmen. And it was a good question. So that's why it's before you now.
Thank you, Attorney Baldwin. Um, okay, so I'm going to open it up to the board for any questions. Nancy, do you have one?
Well, I do, and thank you, Mr. Baldwin, because you did answer some questions, and it's brought out a lot of discussion amongst the community and, and a lot of questions about community gardening and, and the land use and how we use it. And I think it is ripe for discussion. I appreciate you bringing it before the board now and sort of making right to what had not been, you know, the right process for this. For those reasons, I do think that there are people in the community who really want to talk and explore about the way we use community land. And for that reason, I'd like to make a motion, is now the time to amend, to make a motion to take out acting. I want to make a motion to delay acting on this today, to give the community an opportunity to have a more robust discussion and just don't feel ready today to be able to vote to just sign on to another lease for three years. So I guess formally, I would make the motion to amend to hear and consider, rather than hear, consider and act. Not sure if there's support for that, but there's my motion.
Um, so, uh, well, so, okay, you know, this, you're right, Nancy. We've had some residents, a handful of residents, reach out, all of which who don't live anywhere near the farm, talking about wanting to turn it into a community farm. And, you know, listen, I get that. I know, I spoke or I interacted with a resident who did want to talk about community farming. We do have one across from Parish Court right now. And I know that Anthony is working, has, you know, there's been interest in this, and he is working to, we're wanting to put one at the Senior Center location so that people could sign on and use that there. I'm a little apprehensive to delay this because, several reasons. I, I, again, this has been there for a long period of time. Mr. Haydo has farmed this land for a long period of time. It's a, it's a, an attribute to our community, right? So just like the beach or anything else that we have, it's the last working farm in our town, and it is utilized by a farmer, and it is used for community events, which I think the community enjoys. And I have heard from residents that live in the area, as well as RTM members, and I know there's one on the line now, at least one. I'm not inclined to change the use of this property at this time. Mr. Haydo, again, is, is, is working the last working farm in our town. And as you know, well, maybe you don't know, but Fairfield was a farm community. When my father grew up here, with 15 children in his family, there was dirt roads and everyone, you know, this was a very rural sort of area, and Bridgeport was the place where everybody went for work, for everything. And our town is very different now. To have one working farm left in the town, to me, is very appealing. And I, I like that. And I think Mr. Haydo has, has done, has been a good steward of this property and has opened it up to the community and allowed community activities to take place there, which I think is important. So I, that's how I feel about it. In three years, I think the community could have a discussion. Who knows where we'll all be at that time? And, you know, what, 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 what will be happening at that time? So I'm not inclined to delay it. I'll open it up and ask Mr. Flynn if he would like to share his opinions on this.
I, I'm following the email traffic and done a little bit of investigation myself on this, not, not a ton. I wouldn't say I'm an expert in farming. I do know that the Haydo Farm does provide some good services for the community, such as their, their pumpkin patch and the hayrides or whatever that goes on up there in the fall. I think they used to do hayrides. I'm not, I haven't been up there. My kids are a little bit, they've kind of aged out of that, so I haven't been up there for a period of time. But they've always enjoyed going there, and I don't know that it's conducive right now, based on what I'm hearing, to a community farm. I think there's irrigation issues and limitations as to what grows on that land right now, from what I understand. So I don't know that it's, it's receptive to that right now without some investment. And I'm hesitant on such short notice to change this, because I don't know that we've even given Mr. Haydo the opportunity to respond to this, because this has always been kind of a, an ministerial thing for the last 20 years that he's done that. I would encourage, if it hasn't happened, people that have this desire to actually reach out to him directly and talk to him directly and see what maybe can be done in that. Maybe that's happened and I'm not aware of it. That's possible. I don't know, Nancy, if you have any information regarding that. I might not have as much information on that as you do.
And I, if I may, just to respond to what, what you've both sort of alluded to, I think we don't have enough information, which is my only reason to want to postpone, because I just do think that, and I do live in the community, so I am very aware of the community, of Mr. Haydo being a good steward of it. That's certainly not what's in question. I think the community does have a right to weigh in, and all I'm suggesting is that we give the community a real public opportunity to, and, and before we vote today, so that we can ask those questions, so that we can sort of think about, in a bigger way, what might be a good appropriate use. And maybe we land in the same place. I'm just suggesting that we, we really spend some time and think about it before we sign into another, just sort of by rote, three-year lease. I hear you're not inclined to delay the vote. I'm just urging us, because I don't think we gain anything by, by doing it today versus, you know, a month from now, where we can have an opportunity to let the public weigh in and talk about what community gardening might look at. And certainly, I look forward to hearing from the residents on the line today.
All right, you can open it up. Thanks, Nancy.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I keep going off video, because nobody needs to see me coughing.
No problem. As a guy with a face for radio myself, I can completely understand, you know? Madam First Select Woman, you can open it up to comments.
Okay, so I'm going to open it up to the public. Let me see if I could use the chat, if people could just put their, if they want to speak on this item. And I'll just say, you could speak on the main item or on the motion that Nancy made. So one or the other, or both, whatever you prefer. I'm going to look here.
I unmuted myself. I'm April Klein, but I don't know if I'm allowed to speak at this moment.
Sure, well, people are, you're on the phone, April?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. No, I'm going to let you go. We do have people in the chat, but just go right ahead, and then I'm going, I'm going to go into the chat. If there's other people on the phone, I'll, I'll try to get to them as well. Go ahead, April.
Okay.
Can you just give your full name and your address, please?
Yes, my full name is April Klein with a C, and I live at 104 Hillside Road in Fairfield, Connecticut.
Okay, thank you, go ahead.
Sure, so I've been a resident of Fairfield for about 23 years. My husband and I and three girls. I'm also on the Greenfield Hill Improvement Society Board. I want to say about eight or nine years, maybe 10 years, I think. And we do the Pumpkin Festival every year. It's been a huge part of my girls' growing up and Girl Scouts, and I had all the Girl Scouts do it for a number of years. Obviously, my girls are a little older now as well. We go to the farm and we purchase the dried-out corn there. We do the Pumpkin Festival, and I'm in support of having Mr. Haydo stay there for three years and enjoying the farm as well. And I'm in support of keeping him there as a resident and also as a board member of GHVIS.
All right, well, thank, thank you, April. I appreciate you calling.
Sure, absolutely.
All right, I'm going to go to the chat, and then I'll go back to the, if there's anybody on the line, and I'll just open it up then. So the next one we have is Sharon Pistelli.
Hi, Madam First Select Woman, can you hear me?
Yes, can hear you fine.
Great, thanks. I'm Sharon Pistelli, 107 Motor Drive, and I have a statement on behalf of me, of me and Joe Brigara, who is on Old Post Road. She happens to be away on vacation, so this statement is on behalf of both of us, and I'll try to make it quick. The lease agreement under review today by the Board of Selectmen concerns Fairfield's greatest and perhaps least known assets, the 1988 purchase of 28 acres of land located at Greenfield Hill at 2701 Congress Street, and the apartment streams, including great work, wetlands, woodlands, stone walls, shrub borders, a large barn and a tractor shed. This is Greenfield Farm, and included are three parcels of land and added to seven acres of flat, hobo fields that are ideally suited for cultivation of crops, which is being with a historical rural farming character of Fairfield. The Greenfield Farm lease has been approved on a pro forma basis for the last 10 or more years without meaningful performance in years by the Board of Selectmen. And that's actually, Biden Farms have been launched by Gilkins, which is Amber Farm, Westport, Stinkman Farm, and Weston, the Shott Farm. All of these town farms have thrived and passed three and a half years in the season due to pandemic, providing worthwhile resources of both food and produce and activities to their communities. Today, we ask the BOS to undertake a meaningful review of the tenant's performance as well as management of the land to ensure that the obligations required in the agreement are being met by both parties, so that this invaluable resource is careful property and so that it can thrive for many generations to come. The tenant's primary obligation in the lease says that the land is to be used exclusively for market gardening of field crops, specifically corn, tomatoes, pumpkins and flowers, and the tenant is required to sell the produce grown on the premises to the general public at the location on Congress Street. The tenant's additional obligations include assisting in community clearing and building of trails, a biennial report describing activities on the premises, maintaining various insurance policies, including general liability, workers' comp, et cetera, planting a cover crop of winter rye over, between September 15th and November 1st. And then on the town side, the town has conservation obligations for the preservation of natural resources, ensuring that the tenant maintains the soil used between 6.0 and 7.0 on the cultivated field, clearing the great work and other streams from overgrowth, inspecting the premises, ensuring that tractor shed is maintained, ensuring the board entrance, the road entrance to the farm and the parking area are cleared, and then ensuring that walking trails are marked in the buffer area. And then also, of course, ensuring that the tenant complies with all federal laws. We ask that the Board of Selectmen to write any votes with previous use until it can determine that the tenant has previously fulfilled its obligations, or if it determines that the tenant has not met its obligations, that the Board of Selectmen will appoint someone to work for the tenant and the town to ensure that both parties fully meet their obligations for the duration of the lease term, and future renewals will be carefully scrutinized for prior approval. So that's our statement, but then also, you know, it comes philosophically to, is this land for the common good, or is this land, you know, certainly, you know, Mr. Haydo has a long history of farming, and that's great, but can we also open it to members of the community to grow for, you know, perhaps Operation Hope and other charities? Because food is going to go up 20% this year. And, you know, this land is hobo and ready for us to use it. And so, you know, we need to think about, if this is for the common good and it is town property, what we can do, you know, that would benefit everyone, and also, you know, to honor all the work that Mr. Haydo has done over the years. So that's it, and thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. And our next person who is in the chat.
Just for a matter of record, Sharon, I heard you and got the gist of it. It was a little muffled through you, Madam First Select Woman. Can we ask Ms. Pistelli to, to submit what her statement that she has in writing, just for the record?
I believe she did send it to us and the Board of Selectmen in an email today, I believe it was.
And can it be part of the public record of today's meeting?
Sure, I can send that to Prue.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so our next one, the next person in the chat is Erin Bellis. Erin, or, I'll hi her.
Hi, everyone, I'm Erin Bellis. I live at 3781 Congress Street. So as you can see, actually, I live right next door to the farms, right behind me at this window. I wanted to mimic what April said, and I think everything she said was right on point. We love the farm, we love Bob, we think he's amazing, as you all do. We're over there in the fall almost every day, you know, the pumpkin patch, the corn mazes, and nothing but great things to say about the property and how he maintains it. I, the reason why we moved here about a year and a half ago was the, the history that Greenfield Hill brings. And knowing all about that farm and the history of it, and that it's still working, and it's still running, and it's not been changed into something else, you know, not developed into housing or anything commercial, is what brought us here. And the fact that we can look out our window each morning and see that is, is everything to us. And to what Sharon was saying, unfortunately, Bob and I have talked to him a bunch of times about this, you can't grow crops. You know, he has the deer problem, he has other, you know, animal problems, and I think, like someone else was mentioning, the irrigation problems. So unfortunately, I don't think any of that could happen, but, you know, I'm not the expert. But anyway, I would just like to say how much I, I do enjoy it and how much I would love for it to, you know, to stay the way it is.
Thank, thank you, Erin, for taking the time to share your comments with the board. The next person on the, on the chat is David Allen.
Hi, thank you. I live at 126 Lally Boulevard. I moved to Fairfield in 2019, so I'm a relative newcomer. I lived in Weston for 25 years. I'm still serving on the board of the Friends of LaShott Town Farm. It's a 501(c)(3) that supports a farm that sort of came into the town's ownership in a similar way. What I found when I was living there is that that farm became a place where there was sort of nonpartisan, of all ages gathering of people when they were working in their community gardens. It didn't really impose on the neighbors in the sense that not all 50 people, there are 50 plots there, are used at the same time. People stagger their times throughout the week. When you talk about 50 garden plots and the soil, et cetera, these plots are all raised, so how the soil is, has been managed over the years so that it's not productive? I'm not really sure I understand what that means. I mean, was it treated with herbicides and other kinds of chemicals that have destroyed its nourishing capability? I don't really, I don't know what that means, but this concept that I'm proposing would be for raised beds. I also don't understand how a working farm could be operated with a garden hose out of a house well. I mean, perhaps it is, but most, most farms, particularly if you're growing pumpkins, I would think would require a fair amount of water. So I don't, and some of these things, and I think this is why Nancy was asking for a delay there. A lot of questions, I think, that have been raised about the property, whether the, I think it's called a Pest Management Report has been filed, you know, that has to do with how the farm is being managed from, it's called Integrated Pest Management Report. That's supposed to be filed twice a year. There's also supposed to be a report about the community improvements that are, and amenities being offered to the town. Mr. Haydo is supposed to, this I don't really understand, but supposed to have 75 hours of community service. I know he's an elderly person, and that's probably a lot to ask. It's supposed to be 75 hours outside of the, the farm. Also, the agreement, just as an aside, Mr. Baldwin, I don't think that the, from what was posted online, I don't think any of the appendices or exhibits are attached. I think those are rather crucial, particularly Exhibit D, which deals with what the obligations of the parties are, particularly with the stewardship of the property. So I, I mean, I think I could make a pretty strong presentation about the opportunities if I knew more about what the opportunity is for bringing water or fencing. if I knew more about what the opportunity is for bringing water or fencing. In Weston, for instance, at LaShott Town Farm, the deer are certainly just as plentiful in Weston as they are in Greenfield Hill, but this farm is surround, this community garden is surrounded by fencing that's very rustic, post, I forget what it's called, but it's unobtrusive, but it's high enough to keep out the deer and the rodents. So some of these objections, I think, can be addressed if we can have an open communication and discussion about it. I also appreciate, you know, how the neighbors feel. It's a great amenity to look out on open space. Community garden, like I'm talking about, is really a half acre for a hundred plots. And this is, I understand, a twenty-one point seven acre parcel. The other thing, Mr. Baldwin, I didn't understand, maybe you could explain. It's twenty-one point seven acres that the town purchased for the number that you mentioned, but this lease is for ten acres. Are the other acres wooded or wetlands, or what's happening with those?
You want me to answer that question? It's, he leases ten acres, and the other half is all open space.
It's wetlands and woods.
It's wetlands and woods.
Okay, so the area that's considered to be the ten acres is where, I mean, I drove up there one day and looked like it was corn stocks. Is that, is that what it is? That part, is that the ten acres, basically?
Yeah, this is a little unusual. We don't typically have a Q and A for public comment. It's just usually public comment. Maybe if there's other people who are going to comment, those questions can be answered during it, during the discussion.
Okay. In any event, my last comment about it, I'm sorry.
Sure, go right ahead.
Oh, I thought someone else was speaking. I think there are a lot of opportunities for public education when you have a community farm. And I know that there has been discussion about having other sites. I was looking online to try to find some history, and it looked like on June twenty-eighth, twenty-ten, in the patch, there was discussion about trying to find another space for a community garden. The Drew Park space has forty-six plots for sixty-one thousand people. In comparison, Weston's about ten thousand people and has fifty plus. It has a very large community giving garden that supplied over two tons of food to food insecure people last year. So I don't think anybody is looking to evict Mr. Heydo or revolutionize the use of the land, but you're talking about one fortieth of the land or one twentieth of the property that's currently corn. I think he also has property in Easton, according to an article that I read, which may be the source of the vegetables that have been sold there. But in any event, I, again, agree with Nancy that there are a lot more questions than answers, and I don't see the rush. As you've pointed out, First Select Woman, this hasn't been handled properly in the past. It hasn't been discussed, it hasn't been reviewed, it hasn't been voted on. And so I think this would be a good time to at least raise these issues and address them openly. That's the end of my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. We have Melissa Longo on next in the chat, and Melissa is actually an RTM member who represents this district.
I thank you, Madam First Select Woman, Melissa Longo, District One, T M. But I'm also, I live next at thirty-seven ninety-one Congress Street, which is also next to Erin Bellis's residence. We actually share a driveway, and we've lived here for about four years. And I'm pretty much a lifelong Fairfield resident, so I've been familiar with Heydo Farm since I was younger. And as, excuse me, just going back to some, everyone saying about questions, I just, I think that, you know, after, yes, Mr. Heydo is an older gentleman. However, he is out there and working, and I just don't, I guess my question is, not really a question, but more of a comment as to, I know that this hasn't been handled properly in the past, however, over the last twenty years. Just curious as to why now this has to be, why now this is being brought up as something to have a further discussion on when it's the pumpkin festival and the fall festival that he has each year. He has some charity events over there as well. We, a lot of members in the community know that, and he has told us several times, and when you ask him, he's extremely knowledgeable. We've had many, many conversations in person, over the phone. I just, to be a good neighbor, check on him from time to time, and my kids and I are there a lot, and walk my dogs over there, that kind of thing. And he will, has told me many times that the part of the area where his home is as well, where there is conservation, there is a lot of deer. He's not able to put up the proper fencing to keep the deer out. Yes, we all have fencing in and around the area, and it's, I mean, there's deer in my yard all the time. The other thing is, is that, yes, there's lots of corn. He grows the corn and some vegetables. He also has the other farm that he, his family has in Easton as well. And I know he sells a lot of that on a daily basis. I believe they're closed on Sundays, but that might have changed. You know, things obviously changed with the pandemic, and he was not, you know, we weren't over there as much, they weren't operating as much, which makes sense. And I think that, from everything he has told me, is extremely knowledgeable. He's been farming his entire life. It's a generational situation, and it's a generational job and occupation for him. And I know that in Sharon Pastili's email with Representative Vergara, she had, they had mentioned Ambler Farm, Wakeman Community Farm. And after doing some research, you know, it seems to me that all of these farms are completely different from Heydo Farm and how they operate. Heydo Farm has the corn farm with pumpkins and a couple of different things, whereas Wakeman, Ambler, and, I'm sorry, I forgot the other one. They all have summer camps and summer programs and then educational. They have the capacity to do that, from what I understand. This, again, it seems to me that to wait on a vote for this just doesn't, things have been, you know, operating as they should, and Mr. Heydo is willing and able and has proven to be, you know, very capable. So to question that now for him, basically, you know, to have another person come in to evaluate that, I don't understand why we would do that unless there is a serious problem with how things have been handled over the last twenty-plus years moving forward. So it seems that, you know, according, according to him and according to a lot of the people in the community, this is really, you know, like Erin had said earlier, this is a huge part of what makes Greenfield Hill special, and the fact that this is the only working farm left in Fairfield, which, you know, I can't speak to, you know, Amblers in Weston, Wakeman Farm is in Wilton, Weston Line, how they handle things over there is, you know, not necessarily the same kind of farming capacity that we have here at Heydo, excuse me, Greenfield Farm. So I just think that at this point, you know, maybe we come back after this lease, you know, in another three years and come back to the table. And I think that, you know, the, to have a third party or to have somebody else kind of come in and assess what's happening to make sure that Mr. Heydo is doing his job, I guess I just don't understand what that's all about. But I think I would just ask that you vote to move forward with this lease today. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. I don't see anyone else in the chat, however, there are some call-in signals I see there, and I know that my, Dave Kelly, who's managing the online meeting, said he muted everyone because there was some background noise. So I'm just going to say that anyone who did call in, who may want to speak to this item, you just press star six to unmute yourself, and then you can speak.
Should we just, should we just speak out?
Yeah, could you tell me who you are?
Yes, I'm Misty Byer. I live at four seven two oh Congress Street in Fairfield, right down the street from.
What was your name, what was your name again? I'm sorry.
Sorry, Misty?
Misty? Buyer?
Misty Buyer. Is that better?
Okay, sure, go right ahead.
I applaud this conversation. I think this farm is an absolute jewel in the middle of Greenfield Hill, and I'm so glad to hear this conversation coming from all different angles about protecting this land and keeping it into some kind of rural farming status. And I think this is terrific that the community is galvanized to have this conversation. So I would encourage, Mr. Heydo, who's done such an incredible job farming this area for so many years of his life, is probably not going to want to be farming forever and ever. And I think it would behoove us to look at a long-term plan for this incredible piece of land, whether, you know, you want to wait for that three-year mark to be done or whether you have a collaborative conversation with him while he's still leasing the land. I think it's, it's an important conversation to have so that when the time comes, you know, there's a plan for how to move forward. So that would be my one suggestion. I think, you know, everybody is concerned that the land stays in that rural character and that it, we can't just wait till three years are over and expect, you know, a, you know, a plan to take place without, you know, a community having a conversation and thinking about this. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you, Misty. I appreciate you taking the time to share your opinion. Thank you. Is there anyone else who called in? Oh, Misty, did you want to finish? Do you have something else?
Yeah, could we confirm what the price was for that piece of land? How much did we purchase that for?
The town?
The town, yes.
Tony Baldwin, do you know the answer to this question?
Thank you, I have written down, and I, I forget whether it was four point eight five million or just over five million, but I can get that for you, but it was in that range.
For the record, that would be great, if we could just clarify it for the record. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you. Is anyone else who called in, you hit star six to unmute and speak if you have a comment? I see some more phone, well, pictures.
Hi, Amy Sparazza, three twenty-two Brambley Hedge Circle. Can you hear me?
Hi, Amy?
Yep, Amy Sparazza, three twenty-two Brambley Hedge Circle.
Three twenty-two Brambley?
Yep.
Bly, okay, sure, go right ahead, Amy.
Thank you for taking the time to discuss this. You know, like everybody said, I think this is really important. We moved to Greenfield Hill about two and a half years ago, and a huge part of the reason, like Erin Bellis said, that we moved here is for the historical aspect of it and the special nature of this neighborhood that really is unique. And the first time that I went to this farm was on a field trip with my daughter when she was three, and, you know, I'll never forget that. That, my daughter's little preschool, her first and really her only ever field trip because of COVID. And when you take away these little gems that are so few and far between these days, you really lose something. And I think community farms are wonderful. I live also near Wakeman Farm, and we go there often, and I think it's great. I don't think that now is the time to take this lease away from Mr. Heydo. I think that you can spend the next three years really investigating how you're going to transition this property and choose something, you know, into the next phase of it, like, like the previous caller so eloquently and beautifully said that, you know, I'm sure this is not what he's going to want to do forever. You know, he's an elderly gentleman, and it's so incredible that he's had this farm for such a long time, and to take that away from somebody, you know, at eighty-four years old or however old he is, I think is really, really wrong. So in my opinion, the benefits of a community farm, whether or not this is the right place where it just does not outweigh the negative of switching the lease at this time. So I would ask that you please go ahead and just vote to renew the lease with Mr. Heydo. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Amy. Thank you for taking the time. Is there anyone else on the phones that wants to push the star six to unmute, to provide a comment or an opinion? Okay, I don't, I don't think there's any, I see some lines, but I don't hear anybody. Once again, it's star six if you want to unmute and speak to the board?
Yes, can you, can you hear me?
Sure.
Yes, this is Robert Heydo.
Oh, hello, Mr. Heydo, call-in user eight. Yes, okay. Hi, nice to hear your voice.
Yeah, I just want to appreciate everything everybody has said about me, and I'll be happy to ask any or take any questions.
All right, well, thank you. Thank you for taking the time to be on the call. Does the board have any questions for Mr. Heydo specifically? Nancy, I think you're on mute.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
I do have a comment, and I would just like to say to Mr. Heydo, I want to echo what everyone has said on the phone. I think this has been such an important part of our community. And again, I, this is Nancy Leftwood speaking, Mr. Heydo. So I'm here as a resident of Greenfield Hill, as a mom who has enjoyed the space that you have provided for the community with the pumpkin patch and have been to your farm and am a neighbor. So I, I don't think that anyone in asking, or those of us on this call today that are supportive of delaying, are questioning how valuable and beautiful this asset and your farm and all you've done there, what it's done for the community. So no, I don't think anyone is questioning that, but I did want to address, Madam First Select Woman, some of the comments broadly, but it's not for Mr. Heydo specifically, so is now the time or? I want to agree. I mean, Misty, you used the word jewel, and I heard Erin and Melissa. I, I agree with, with actually everything you've said, with the exception of about now not being the time to kind of delay. One of the things that I admire about this administration, actually, is the ability and the focus on modernization and a question of just because we've always done something in a certain way doesn't mean we should continue doing it as such. You know, modernization is a word we keep hearing about, and I applaud that. Don't always agree with the road there, but really agree with that sentiment. And, you know, when you look at Wakeman Town Farm and LaShott Farm and some of the farms that have been referenced, I just think that we have an opportunity. I think no one, I certainly would not want to change character, and I love the working nature of the farm. I'm just suggesting that we should not enter into something, again, for a three-year period, without asking a lot of these questions, because there are so many more questions than answers. Again, it's not to undermine all the great and beautiful work that Mr. Heydo has done and will continue to do. I just think we have an opportunity here to think about ways in which we might use this property and space differently. And I don't think we should be afraid of those conversations. And again, we may land exactly where we are, but I think we have an opportunity. And so I just don't see, given that it has been such a wonky process with this lease, why not just kind of put a pin in signing something and really take this opportunity to explore where we could go and have some of our questions answered, because none of us on the line are experts in terms of, at least the callers, if I may just finish this thought, in terms of, you know, the deer and the fencing and the conservation and the water and the agriculture, and it would be great to really have the community hear some of those answers, so.
So Nancy, Tom. Why would you not then approve, why would you not then approve the three? If everybody loves what Mr. Heydo is doing, no one's trying to stop him from doing it because it's such a gem, why not approve the contract for three years? And as a couple of callers said so eloquently, use that three-year period working with Mr. Heydo, who has been very civic-minded and community-minded, to learn more about the property and see collaboratively what might be possible for that property moving forward at such time that Mr. Heydo no longer wants to do what he's doing. I don't even, and the question I would have for Mr. Heydo is, what do you want to keep doing, Mr. Heydo? There's a lot of people speaking for you, what do you want to do?
Well, I'd like to do it for as long as I can. I just turned eighty-one, and to clarify, the land I farm in Easton is not my land. And to clarify, the land I farm in Easton is not my land. The Bushport Hydraulic Company, before it became Kelvin and Aquarian, actually farmed up on the hill, the old orchard on Black Rock Turnpike across from the apple barn. And they asked me if I'd be interested in farming up there to keep the land in production. And I said, yeah, sure. So I went up there in 1998. And then the water company sold the land, well, they were going to originally put a golf course there. And then it was sold to Troutbrook Valley. So I farmed about seven acres in Troutbrook Valley, which is, well, mildly fenced, to put it, I guess. But then the rest of the land is, you know, there's more of a deer problem there than there is here. So I was able to put up a 10-acre electric fence up there, solar-powered. And that's where I grow all my pumpkins. What I do down here, the five-acre or seven-acre field right in front of the barn is the corn maze. And then there's about two acres next door from that lot, which is next door to Mrs. Sanford's property. So it's a total of about eight and a half to nine acres that I have under production. And the rest is all wetlands and woodland, like somebody else had mentioned. And without being able to farm up in Easton, I would have probably been out of business quite a few years ago because the deer will not touch the field corn, which is the corn maze. And then I plant two acres of sweet corn over next to Mrs. Sanford's property. And I plant that late, you know, usually around the first week of July for mid-September and October corn, if we don't have a frost. So if there are any other questions that I can answer, I'd be happy to.
Thank you, Mr. Haydo. So I'm just gonna, okay, so.
I have one other comment.
Tom, I just want to finish my thought and then I'll open it back up. So Tom brought up sort of where I was going, right? So there is a lot of discussion about what we can and cannot do there. And that would take a long period of time to get all of these questions answered. And as Mr. Haydo had expressed to me over the phone when we brought the lease up, maybe a month or so ago, to discuss, you know, it's difficult to farm there. There's not a fence system, there's not irrigation. These are what all have to be considered. And frankly, potentially at the time, if we were at some point going to have a community garden, it would be something that would have to be put in a budget, there would have to be discussions, there would have to be a lot of neighborhood meetings. Because as we all know, Fairfield is a very actively engaged community. And I know if my neighbor decided to put in a community garden, I might have something to say about it. People would have something to say about it. So it would prolong it. So at this point in time, Mr. Haydo has been doing this for 20 years. Everyone knows what goes on there. And to delay his lease would not give him the comfort or ability to start the planting season, which is now. And so this discussion could circle around for a very long time. So Tom touched on what my thoughts were. This is a three-year lease. We could have these discussions broadly with the public, more in-depth, have discussions about community gardens as a whole. And I know that Anthony's master plan, Perkin-Rick master plan, is looking at a whole host of issues. And this also could be something that's been discussed. And I think it may have been Anthony. So this, I think, is a discussion for our community as a whole, not just at this site, but maybe in other sites, as I mentioned, the senior center. And maybe there's other sites we could identify where our community could get more engaged and involved with community gardening. And I know a lot of our residents in town actually grow portions of their own backyard gardens and donate those to Operation Hope. And I know that some of the garden, the community garden over on Ward Terrace near Parish Court is donated to Operation Hope. So I think this is a broader discussion, not just Mr. Haydo's farm, but for the town of Fairfield in general. However, I'm not inclined to change the terms of this agreement with Mr. Haydo. Again, it's the last working farm in the town. We would have to really talk to everyone who lives near this. And it's a bigger, bigger discussion. And I'm not inclined to wait to finalize the lease with someone the town has had a very good relationship with for 20 years and offer something very unique to our entire community, not just that neighborhood. So that's where I'm standing on this. And again, I'm open to having this discussion again, more broadly, about community gardens and how we can be a partner. And we can work with our Open Space Land Acquisition Committee. I know that they have come to me over the past year talking about the land across the street from Osborne Hill School, where the gentleman who owns that property has been trying to sell it for a very high amount. But there was discussion there and talking about putting, making that a community garden at some point, if we could get some various groups to come together to help potentially at some point purchase that. And I think there's other areas that we could discuss as well throughout the town. So I am very engaged in having that discussion. I think it's a good discussion for our community to be having. I'd love to modernize our community garden system and have more. But I'm not sure that everything has to be modernized, especially the last working farm in Fairfield. So I'm inclined to allow this to go through and I want to keep the discussion going. And I hope that the people who brought this forward, the community garden idea, will continue that conversation and engage with the town, with land acquisition, with Anthony and my administration about ideas of where we can do that sooner rather than later. And I'll open it back up to the board.
Yeah, I don't have too much to add. I mean, I agree with what you're saying, you know, philosophically. I think we just, again, have a different idea of getting there at this point. So I think that as a town purchase that was costly, I would just want to see more of the town to be able to enjoy it. And we're talking about a half acre for a community garden. And I'm just not so comfortable signing a lease that I still think doesn't address all the questions that we still have. So agree that, you know, it sounds like I'm in the minority in wanting to delay it. But also agree that we need to have ongoing discussion and look forward to being part of those discussions. Because there's a difference between, you know, again, community gardening and farming and how we can have the community participate in town land and still have Mr. Haydo enjoy what he's doing. So it does sound like I, again, in terms of delaying, I am in the minority. But, you know, wanted to put that out there for the record. But we'll certainly be engaged in conversations on what we can do to change things over the next three years.
All right, well, thank you, Nancy. I appreciate that. So I appreciate everyone taking the time to share your opinions on this. And I think it's a very good discussion for us to be having, moving forward for our community. So we do have a motion and a second. I am going to call, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm going to abstain.
Okay, Nancy abstains. And just going to make sure Prue gets that. The motion carries two to one.
And Madam Chairwoman, I need to get off this call because I have another commitment I need to rush to. So I'd like to thank you. And Nancy, feel better, please?
Thank you very much.
All right.
Feel better, Nancy.
Thank you all, and thanks for calling in. I actually really appreciate the discussion of all of it. And as I said, I'm not in the majority position today, but certainly will stay engaged in what the conversation for community gardening and how we can use the lands, town lands, in a different way or better way or the same way, but just open to the discussion, so.
No, and I welcome that. And I hope that the proponents of this community garden will stay engaged with you and with me and even reach out to Land Acquisition Commission, because I think they're a good resource to use and to Anthony as well. Because I think this is something we should be looking into for our community. So I just want to thank everyone who called in. We do have a couple of other items, business items. So I'm going to go to our next item.
Madam First-Led Woman, I'm sorry, Town Attorney Jim Baldwin. I just want to clarify my statement earlier. It was 1.875 million that the town purchased it for. I put that in the chat, but I just.
Yep, in 1998. Actually, I remember that. It was when the Land Acquisition Commission was quite robust at the time. And I think Jill Kelly actually served on it. And it had quite a bit of money. The town was putting money into it and people were donating money to it. And we bought a lot of property over a period of years in, all throughout the town, so. Thank you. The next item is item number 12. Can I get a motion to consider an act upon the tax refunds as recommended by the tax collector in the amount of $40,370.33?
So I'll make the motion.
Okay, I'll second it. Do you have any questions about it, Nancy?
I don't.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. I'm going to quickly, just do a quick update. Just quickly share that Fairfield, this maybe some of you saw, received a $3.5 million federal grant toward our emergency radio network. I want to sincerely thank Senator Blumenthal for his help in securing those federal dollars. Toward the overall, it's almost a little bit over $7.5 million to get the complete system up and running, but it is a huge help to our community. And so I just wanted to say that. And I wanted to recognize Captain Koval, who worked really hard in writing this grant for the application of funding. And it's going to have a huge impact on our public safety. I want to just say also, the representative town meeting will vote on their budget Monday, May 2. And the Board of Finance will set the mill rate on Thursday, May 5. Per the town charter, the RTM has the authority to decrease the budget, but not increase it unless an appeal to any reductions is submitted. I want to let the public know, I know I said it in my newsletter, but anyone who's listening, department heads are appealing three of the Board of Finance cuts at the RTM level at their special meeting on May 2 prior to the budget vote. The RTM can overturn and restore the funding by a two-thirds vote. And I included the overview of the changes the Board of Finance made in my last newsletter. And I also want to acknowledge that and invite all of our residents and their families to attend this 37th Annual Holocaust Commemoration hosted by the town of Fairfield's Holocaust Community on Wednesday, April 27 at 7:30 at the First Church, which is located on 148 Old Post Road. On April 27, will be proclaimed as a special day of remembrance in memory of the victims of the Holocaust and in tribute for those to help us never forget. The Day of Remembrance includes a keynote speaker from the Holocaust Memorial Memoration. And this will be, he will share his experience during World War II as a hidden child and of the righteous Gentiles who saved his life and that of his brother. Additionally, Fairfield Ward High School senior Samantha Rizzoli will be a speaker. As victims who survived the Holocaust continue to age, it is more important than ever to hear their stories, to share them with our next generations. And I ask residents, young and old, in all faiths and backgrounds, to join us for this evening of commemoration and learning. And I want to just quickly note, all residents are also encouraged to participate in our annual shop and stroll. Spring, Thursday, April 28, participating shops in our downtown will open at their regular times and they'll have extended hours through 9:00 PM. So it's going to be a lot of fun. They're doing Mother Day gift stuff and just like we do at Christmas time and during the holiday time, it'll be, I think it'll be really nice. So I hope people will look into coming down and support our local businesses through that shop and stroll event. And is there anything else anybody else would like to bring up? Nancy, go ahead.
I'm going to make my own public service announcement, which is if anyone is feeling sick with COVID cases being wonky again. Please stay home. I have no comorbidities. I am healthy. And when I tell you I felt like a dumpster fire in this last week, it is no joke. For some people, they will experience a common cold. I tell you, I do not underestimate that I felt like I swallowed hot glass. So it's been a week. I'm on the mend, thank goodness. But if you are not feeling well, please stay home, wear a mask, continue to get yourself tested, boost if you have not. And that is coming from my own personal public service announcement. It is no joke.
Yeah.
So.
No, I'm sorry.
That's all I can say on the matter.
Yeah, it's, yeah, people, I think people forget it's still there. It's around us and everybody has a different reaction. You don't know if you're going to get really sick or if you're not. And so it, you know, COVID is still alive and well. And Nancy is living proof of that. Thank you, living proof.
Yes, exactly, amen.
But you're healthy and you're, I know you've suffered, but obviously I'm glad to see you. And I'm glad you're okay.
Thank you. And I will be at the Holocaust Memorial Celebration, so.
Oh, that's great.
For being, for announcing that and sharing that. It's an important commemoration.
Absolutely. And if anybody who does have symptoms, please don't show up to the commemoration.
Exactly.
But again, it's a tough season, you know? I was in a meeting the other day and, you know, people have allergies and stuff. And right away, you're like, do you have COVID? And, you know, so it's that time of year where you don't really know, you know, what's going on, so.
Don't assume it's a cold. I mean, I think testing still becomes a good, important resource.
Absolutely. And it's better to be safe than sorry and be careful, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time to share that. I know it's your personal health and.
Yep, I just.
No, it's, you know, it's, I appreciate you taking the time to share that with others.
Yeah, thank you.
And I'm glad you're okay.
Thank you.
All right, everyone. Well, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Oh, I will move to adjourn.
I'm sure you will. Okay, I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, aye.
Thank you.
Meeting is adjourned. Thanks so much, everyone. Have a good evening.